District Board of Education meeting, Monday, February 28, 2022, 6 o'clock PM, Belmont Administration Center.
I'd like to call this meeting to order. Roll call please, Ms. Damon.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Ayers?
Here.
Mrs. Brockman?
Here.
Mrs. Hoskins?
Here.
Mr. Canwisher?
Here.
Mrs. Kunkel?
Here.
Dr. Wugley?
Here. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any questions regarding this evening's agenda? If not, I will take a motion.
I move the board approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Hoskins, second by Mr. Canwisher to approve the agenda as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I'll need an approval for a executive session first.
I move the board hold a closed session as provided in section 21.5 of the open meetings law to evaluate the professional competency of an individual whose hiring is being considered to prevent needless and irreparable injury to that individual's reputation as that individual has requested a closed session.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Anderson, second by Mr. Ayers, that the board hold a closed session as provided in section 21.51I of the open meetings law to evaluate the professional competency of an individual whose hiring is being considered to prevent needless and irreparable injury to that individual's reputation as that individual has requested a closed session. Roll call vote please, Ms. Damon.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Ayers?
Yes.
Mrs. Brockman?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoskins?
Yes.
Mr. Canwisher?
Yes.
Mrs. Kunkel?
Yes.
Dr. Wugley?
Yes. And now I will take a motion for an exempt session.
I move the board hold an exempt session for the purpose of negotiations as provided in section 20.173 of the Code of Iowa.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Hoskins, second by Mr. Ayers, that the board hold an exempt session for the purpose of negotiations as provided in section 20.173 of the Code of Iowa. Roll call vote please, Ms. Damon.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Ayers?
Yes.
Mrs. Brockman? Mrs. Hoskins?
Yes.
Mr. Canwisher?
Yes.
Mrs. Kunkel?
Yes.
Dr. Wugley?
Yes. Vision statement: It is the vision of the Pleasant Valley Community School District to provide the finest academic and extracurricular programs in the state, not in some things, but in all things, not for some students, but for all students. Welcome to our guests. If you would like to address the board regarding a non-agenda item, now would be your opportunity to do so. Seeing none, we will go on to our board members. Ms. Anderson?
I have nothing.
Mr. Ayers?
Nothing at this time, thank you.
Ms. Hoskins?
Nothing for me, thanks.
Ms. Kunkel?
I just quickly wanted to say thank you to administration and principals that have planned field trips, 100th day of school celebrations, 101st day of school celebrations, celebrating 2/22/22. I think sometimes we think of these as just fun events that we could either do or not do, but in a child's eyes, it makes school fun and interesting and motivating to go to. And when they're interested to participate in school, they learn more. And I think it's fun for the teachers, too. And I know it's not easy for them to plan, so I just want to say thank you for doing that.
Thank you. Ms. Brockman?
I would like to thank the elementary principals and the teachers that accommodated the choir tour this last week for the junior high and the high school choir groups to visit each elementary and bring kind of a show of what choir can do for them in high school. And it was a fun event, and it was well-attended, so it was fun. I appreciate all the work that goes into it.
Yeah. Thank you. Mr. Canwisher?
Nothing for me.
Okay. Dr. Lewis?
Nothing at this time.
Okay. Ms. Kunkel, I'm going to save you for last, Mr. Lewis.
I have nothing.
Ms. Damon?
Nothing, thank you.
Okay. Mr. -- well, I'll go to Mr. Zimmerman now.
I only have a couple.
Okay, go right ahead.
One, at our last meeting, our ethics team, newly founded, had just won the state title, and I wanted to give you an update that they've now won the regional title, and they're advancing to North Carolina for the nationals.
Wonderful.
And at least their basketball team is advancing and playing again on Thursday, so.
That's great. Wonderful. Thank you for the update. Mr. Struce?
I have nothing this evening, thank you.
Okay.
We cannot hear the board members.
Test 12. We'll make sure he's speaking closely.
Okay. Moving on. Are there any questions on this evening's consent agenda? If not, I will take a motion.
I move the board hold -- approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Ayers, second by Ms. Kunkel, to approve this evening's consent agenda as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Approval of bills. General funds?
I move that the general fund warrants be issued in the amount of $526,120.86 in the payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Anderson, second by Ms. Brockman, that the general fund warrants be issued in the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Nutrition fund?
I move that nutrition fund warrants be issued in the total amount of $91,146.86 in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Brockman, second by Mr. Ayers, that the nutrition fund warrants be issued in the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Elementary-Junior High Activity Fund?
I move that general fund warrants be issued in the total amount of $6,361.68 in the payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Canwisher, second by Mr. Ayers, that the Elementary-Junior High Activity Fund warrants be issued in the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? High School Activity Fund?
I move that the High School Activity Fund warrants be issued in a total amount of $23,248.11 in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Ayers, second by Ms. Hoskins, that the High School Activity Fund warrants be issued in the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Pebble Fund?
I move that Pebble Fund warrants be issued in the total amount of $89,832.95 in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Hoskins, second by Ms. Kunkel, that the Pebble Fund warrants be issued in the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Internal Service Fund?
I move the Internal Service Fund warrant 6340 to 6347 be issued in the total amount of $494,532.11 in the payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Kunkel, second by Ms. Brockman, that the Internal Service Fund warrants 6340 to 6347 be issued in the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And Trust Fund?
I move that trust fund warrants be issued in a total amount of $924.21 in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Ayers, second by Ms. Canwisher, that the trust fund warrants be issued in the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, moving on to old business. We're going to first go through the second reading of Board Policy Series 200. Mr. Struce?
So, last time, our last board meeting, we went through and kind of just gave you all the 200 series board policies that were either our current ones or recommendations from IASB. Tonight, we really want to do is kind of go through. It's going to take a little time, but we'll go through each one. It really comes down to if you've had a chance to review it, what questions do you have that we want to discuss as a board? Again, some are just, you know, legal citations, some are just combining of policies, but there are a few that you will see as you went through that were different from our current practices that we'll want to look at in terms of board meetings. So, we'll just go through these. You can ask any questions that you may have, and then we'll address how we want to, if there's corrections or revisions we want to have for the next board meeting, which will be the 21st when we come back from spring break that Monday night. That'd be our next reading of these series, but we can continue to make adjustments to these as we go through. So, Beth has them on PDF, so she'll kind of scroll through as we go through them as well. But board members, feel free to ask any questions, and I'll kind of just kind of highlight some things so you understand. The first one that you see, that 200.1, and then also the 200.2, this was kind of similar to our current 201.3. IASB was just kind of saying, there's two policies that they had that really talked about the powers responsibilities and then the various things that we do as a board. So, it was really nothing new. It was just kind of the separating our two policies and our one policy into their two policies that they had. So, that and some legal references were updated at that time. And I'll just kind of pause, and if you have questions, feel free to ask as you jot down notes going through. When you look at the new, or the 200, I'll go to the 201.3, which is the Board of Director Elections. Again, this is just making sure we're updating based upon the even and odd years from what our current policy was. You can see the Board Elections. They also said that we had more information than was needed. So, that is why when you look at the 201.3, it's definitely shorter than the one that we had in our policy, which Beth would be, if you scroll to 201.3, through those "our" sections there, there you go, right there. Yep. So, there's, that was our original, that black one was our original one. It was just shortened up from what you saw there.
Brian, could we go back to 200.2?
You betcha. The 200.2?
Yeah, the organization of the Board of Directors.
Yes.
I think we kind of have some, like a duplicate line. If you look at the last line where it has, "As established by Iowa law, the organizational meeting will be held, blah, blah, blah." That's the last line of that section.
Yes.
We actually say the exact same thing in the second paragraph. Can we just clean that up where we just put "as established by Iowa law" in paragraph 2, where we have that line, and then just take out the last line?
Yes, so we could slide that up?
Yeah.
Work it in there?
And just put in there "as established by Iowa law."
Yes, just add that, that transitional phrase, beginning transitional phrase. Okay?
Thank you.
Yep. Okay, so then Board Elections, 201.3, again, as I said, that's just the shorting up of that one there. 201.4, this was kind of, the qualifications was also our original 201.5. Again, they just offered some suggestions. They termed it qualifications versus the membership and establishment. Again, just saying that ours was very detailed, and it could be shortened up with what they had there in that section.
I believe there's a mistake in the second sentence. There, "ours" should be "our." It will not give rewards in our respect.
Very good, thank you. Thank you.
I have to wonder if certain, frankly, criminal backgrounds or things, elements would disqualify someone from running for the school board, especially as it relates to children specifically or maybe financial matters. Does that ever come up before?
I mean, that is something that we would check with the audit, or the, who we'd check with there.
Secretary of State.
Thank you. That we'd work through them, and they would let us know if there was something that would be, that we had to be aware of.
Okay.
Yep.
Can I go back to the second sentence? Should it be "its rewards are," in the semicolon? You're stating that those characteristics are rewards?
Well, it's rewards.
"Its rewards are respect, respect, students' employees, and satisfaction of their commitment to the university."
Actually, I think the way it's written, even without that change, is meant to say the rewards are being on it are this, this, and this, so which means that is correct. It should be A R E.
Yeah.
That's the way that I read it was, it's, because otherwise it would be.
"Its rewards are respect."
Yeah.
It should be A R E.
Yeah.
It should say "service."
Yeah. We'll go back to IASB and confirm that.
Yeah.
Look at that, if it's the A R E version, and then.
Because the way I read it was, it should be A R B. Yeah. Regardless of, yeah, I could maybe get some clarification there.
Let, let Debbie and I go back and check on that one there and see how that reads there. Any other questions on qualifications there? Term of office, the 201.5, you can see ours there is right there at the bottom, the one paragraph that we had. And really, the biggest thing was the legal citations here that they mentioned this time from IASB, which are underneath our current policy that's crossed off there. 201.6, when there's a vacancy, what happens there? Again, as you read through it, there's a lot of similarities between the two. If you have questions, but a lot of this, some of ours were specific and outdated in terms of what happens when a vacancy is filled. So, this was IASB's newest policy and the process that we would follow should there be a vacancy of the board. And we've implemented that previously, that same process.
So, is the special election follow the same rules in terms of getting on the ballot or running for that vacancy?
As far as signatures and stuff?
Yeah.
And that determines when you actually have to put it on the ballot and so forth moving forward, which, you know, when they, for example, when Catherine, you had to be on the ballot again within the next major election. Yeah.
Catherine's expert. Didn't you get elected three times in one year?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
That's coming up. That's coming up. You're talking about with the, with the most recent legislation that got passed?
Oh, I was just wondering if you had a petition for it?
Yeah, which, I was going to read it from the sentence in here. Which paragraph is that in, sir?
The second.
Thank you. So, if you go back to that one. So, what the board is referring to in the second paragraph, "The board shall publish notice starting the date the board intends to fill vacancy by appointment, but the electors of the school district have the right to file a petition within 14 days of publication of the notice requiring the vacancy be filled by a special election." And so, it's the timeline of which, you know, how quickly can we get that turned around, what that looks like?
And that's if we can't fill the vacancy.
Correct. All right. Board Member Liability, no changes. Code of Ethics, the only thing that was there, I think there was a couple, nope, no changes on Code of Ethics. So, Beth will let you catch up to Presidency. In terms of the President one going through, again, looking at that one there, they just said there's just some things differently with what our policy had in terms of what the Board President might do, and this was just their sample policy that they suggested using. Not a lot of difference, but just a couple small points. Vice President, you'll just note a couple of things in the first and last paragraph. Again, just the election time, when it happens, and you'll see ours on the second page. The duties are the same. Secretary, just, and Treasurer, the next two were just updating legal references. 202.6, this was intertwined in a different board policy that we had, so oath of office, we just pulled it out and made it its own separate policy. And just explains the process that we go through with the Board President and with Debbie. The Conflict of Interests, again, this is a newer policy. One thing I would point out, which you might recall in the last, I think it was the last couple legislative sessions, in paragraph 2, "The benefit to the board does not exceed $6,000." That's if we were to hire someone on the, from the board to do a role for us, like be a robotics coordinator. It used to be $3,000. They bumped it to $6,000, and that was back in, a lot of it was due to when COVID first started and trying to find bus drivers or trying to find other people to help out in the district, that they changed that to $6,000. So, that's just an update that you would see there on that one there. 203.1, the adoption policy. Again, when you looked at our current one that we had previously, was quite extensive. And actually, a few of the items within that, we, our work sessions and so forth are put into a different policy, but they said just shortened up, it was too specific, and use the shorter version of the process that we actually use for adopting a board policy. So, Beth, when you scroll through, it's like the next three pages would be that, our current policy that we have. Revision of Policy, the only change there was just one, legal reference update. Dissemination of Policy was the same thing, just legal references. What to Do in the Absence of a Policy, again, just an update. Ours is right behind it, again, very similar. Legal Counsel just explains in this one, 203.5, you can see ours that was behind it. This just outlines in terms of more specifically, in terms of legal counsel, when contacting them, who can contact them, what that looks like from the board position, which is the second paragraph, which ours did not have, so they recommended us adding that piece in there.
Can you go back to just 203.4, the administration of the absence of policy?
Yes.
So, in that one, one of the questions I had was, so if the superintendent ends up having to do something out of necessity, it just says, "If needed, the superintendent will draw to propose policy for the board to consider." What are the requirements for when that is to happen?
You think that one could.
Or is that just in consultation with the board, and if they want to adopt a policy that you've already implemented?
It could be.
And formally adopted.
Correct, or if there's a change that we don't have a policy for that we want to talk to, IASB, IASB does not have one. This is not, I was going to say, the other part might be situations when the DE might come up with an emergency policy, but that, that's a different board policy itself.
Yeah, because the emergency one is then it expires after the third board meeting.
Correct.
After.
So, this is just something, if we don't, what do we do in the absence of a policy?
So, now, you need to make a decision. You make the policy, but then it comes to the board to discuss if we want to make it a full policy.
And to run it through the process.
Okay.
Yes. 204.1, this is a combination. When you look at this one here, there are a number of items that kind of combine board policies together in terms of what it looks like, and you'll note that our policy was in the black. Policy from IASB is in the red, and part of the question I think we have is, you know, this is different from our current practice right now that we have. So, if you have questions, and I think the question there would be, when you look at the, under public comment during board meetings, and you look at the third paragraph, there, the first sentence, that is a practice different from what we currently do right now. And what IASB had there was, citizens wishing to address the board during public comment must notify the board secretary prior to the board meeting. Sometimes that may happen, but many times, we have discussions at the board table where people may want to come that evening and address the board. So, that would be a different protocol than we currently have. Otherwise, some of the other things, when in terms of, you know, how you state things, Dr. Wugley, in terms of the three minutes and so forth, public comments set aside time. But I think I'd be interested in your feedback on that second paragraph in terms of having people come to the table versus having to call Debbie ahead of time and then not letting anyone speak during the board meeting unless they came, talk to her ahead of time. So, that is a different practice.
Does everybody understand the difference of what they're saying here about how, like right now, I'll just open it up, and if somebody's here, they can get their three minutes and address the board, even though it's a non-agenda item. This would be requiring the public to mention something to Debbie two days in advance, and if they don't mention that they're going to come to the, to say it in the open forum, then their issue, then they can't come up to the podium. And I know, I know there are some districts in the state that have been doing that. We have not been doing that, and this is what IASB has come out with, but which would be a change in what we're doing.
Can I ask, if we approve the 200s, and six months down the road, we don't like how that some part of the 200s is going. We have the opportunity, we have the opportunity to reopen those policies and change them, am I correct?
Correct, yes.
So, I guess my viewpoint on this question is, the agenda comes out on Friday, and if they have to do it two days early, that means they have like, what, a 12-hour window? That just seems, seems too short to me, especially being emailed to offer the public an opportunity to understand, you know, what's on the agenda and all the background stuff that we publish, and get in their name so that they can come and talk to us. So, I actually kind of prefer the approach we've got now personally.
I think I would have to agree with that as well.
Third.
So, let us.
So, we have to, yeah, because, I mean, I, I agree, as long as, you know, we have to give the public time to see what it's about, and then if people are going to make the effort to come here, and then they can't speak because of a technicality, that's, I think that's not being very open. And so, I think that the consensus, from what I can gather from everybody's head nodding, is that we want to keep it the way we're currently doing, not the way IASB is doing it. Is that correct?
Correct.
Yes.
So, we'll have to then, in the next, in the next meeting, we will see a revised change, correct?
So, the phrase that would say is, "Must notify the board secretary prior to the board meeting," would be removed, and we would have it go in our current process we have right now in place.
Right.
Okay?
As far as the three minutes go, normally, speakers will be limited to three minutes. My only question is, what would be the circumstances where we would allow longer than three minutes? And if by being gray in that area, are we putting us up from some subjectivity as far as letting some people talk longer than others?
So, you think that we shouldn't say normally, we should just say speakers are allowed to
I don't know, I go back and forth. I just wanted to bring it up for discussion.
speak for three minutes?
Part of me, I do like having a little wiggle room, because, you know, who's to say there isn't a time? Just in my head, I'm trying to think of what that time would be, and then if we do allow someone longer than three minutes, how can we say that was justified and fair versus not allowing someone else? And then if we get rid of it altogether, you know, I don't know if that's reasonable either, and I don't know if it does make sense all the time, but I thought while we have it open, we at least should talk about it as a board and see if it matters to anyone else. That's just something that kind of flagged in my mind.
Is that where if they have a formal presentation or in-depth, that's where they contact Debbie and get a heads up that they need more than three minutes, because it's an in-depth discussion?
But it's not.
And should it become a board?
But it's, it's not a discussion, because it's a non-agenda item.
Yeah.
So, it's just informative. There will be no discussion when they bring it up.
So, let me rethink that. Or is it something that they? Or is it something that they get their three minutes, and then it's deemed they need longer, that's when we discuss separately, and does it become an agenda item, because it needs more discussion? Or needs to be turned into a discussion versus just a comment?
So then we would never be over three minutes, because if it needs more, that'd be the potential.
Right.
Well, and I assume they would follow the petition process then, right? If they need more time because it's something significant, then I assume they would need the petition process, right, in order to have it appear on the agenda.
So new to this last legislative session, last year with House File 868, that is a new piece that has added the petition to place a topic on the agenda, that's new. Hence, that's why you see it all in red here. Again, partly what you can do is have an agenda placed, a topic placed on the agenda by contacting Debbie, and then Debbie lets me know, or Nikhil and I know, for an agenda item. The petition one is, if it's something is not put on there, and that's where it's the 10% of your previous vote, or 500 voters, that's where that would go on. That'd be more, that'd be a longer than three minutes, potentially, because it's being a presentation, presentation is being given, or comments being given that we're listening to. And I think that would go to what Christine is saying there.
So Christine, I guess what I'm thinking is, if somebody might assert that something that lengthy, I want them to come talk to me about it, and then after that conversation, you know, talking about it publicly to the whole Board makes sense to me, but having a lengthy period, I don't know how that works, and how long is limited?
Yeah, I agree, I don't really know how this really rolls out, but I don't want to flip a switch next time we vote, and all of a sudden the public is, we're like, oh, nope, you're done. I want to be very cognizant of what we're doing and the comments and-
So I won't have, Beth, don't scroll all the way, but I'll just read it. And board policy 205.9, which is public hearings, there's a phrase in there also, it reads, speakers are asked to keep their remarks within three minutes. So that's how it's phrased in 205.9, is speakers are asked to keep their remarks within three minutes. That could be the same verbiage that would be used here, so it's consistent, if you wanted to do that.
I'm thinking about Catherine Thomas, I think we need the public to know how long they have in advance, because if they're prepared, the remarks will come in, right? They need to know what that window's going to be, so we can't, I don't think we can change it every board period, that's where my head's at.
I think we typically, I mean, we've said, I mean, that's been our policy for a long, forever, as long as I've known, that we ask three minutes for each person that speaks. And I think, for the most part, our guests are respectful of that, and I don't feel like we need to have it, you know, you only have three minutes, there's no exceptions. I think we can continue on like we have been, I think everybody knows they have three minutes. And if we have one person here to speak, and they speak for three and a half minutes, that's completely fine. It just gets hard when we have 30 people that need to speak, then we really need to stick with the three minutes. But I think for the most part, our guests abide by that, and I guess I don't think that we need to take a hard line on that.
So would you be, instead of saying the phrasing here will be limited to, to keep it as, speakers are asked to keep their remarks within three minutes?
Yeah.
Use that phrasing there-
Yes.
Of 205.9.
And then after the three minutes, if they can just finish up a closing thought-
Correct.
And then be done.
Which is typical, what you and Mike would do in those situations, is try to keep it to that, bring closure to it.
So Brian, last time, several weeks ago, we mentioned this, and I think the city of Davenport has, if the comments continue on the same topic, so if they're discussing X, and like, only a couple people, because when the comments start becoming the exact same, the city of Davenport does have some wording on scope of how many people, so that way the community works as a team to address and brings forth the best speaker and all the points by one speaker. Does that make sense? And I don't know if that's something, I don't have all the details on it, I've just been present on a big topic down at that instance, where the Viking community elected a speaker to call out all the bullets versus having 10 people repeat the same thing.
Yes. To your question, first of all, yes, some boards have done that, and cities, I can't speak to Davenport, and they may have that. I think what we have always practiced is, throughout everything, is to give everyone their voice, and whoever wants to speak on it, even though there might be similar components, to give everyone a voice and be respectful of that. So I think keeping it at where we have it and what we've done, and not putting that in there, that'd be my recommendation at this point.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, I, I'm staying along with that. The other thing that this series, so I think that we're set on keeping that three minutes the way that it's set then.
She will change it to what 205.9 says.
Okay.
Yes.
All right.
Just trying to limit it to three minutes.
And then the other thing that this talks about is, of course, giving three minutes to the individual, and they get three minutes. So if they come up with two people, they don't get six minutes. They get, that individual gets three minutes, and then whoever's with them gets the additional three minutes. And you cannot give your minutes to somebody else, okay? So that's what this is talking about as well.
But it doesn't say that in there, so do we have to say that in there, if that's what we're looking for?
Well, it says right here, normally speakers will be limited to three minutes, is all it says. And then there was, there's someplace else in the policy, I gotta find it.
It does say that somewhere.
It says it's somewhere, that you're allowed to get three minutes, and you cannot give your minutes to somebody else. I remember reading that, and I'm trying to figure out where it was.
I can't remember what one it's in, but I remember-
Yes, I read it too.
-I've been reading that also.
It's in that 205.9, the public hearings. In no event will a speaker be allowed to take the time of another speaker, maybe?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think is what you might be referring to.
Yes.
And again, I think that's just a prime process of, when going through what that looks like, to say Nikhil can handle that.
Yeah, it says right, in no event will a speaker be allowed to take time of another speaker.
Right, that's what you're looking at.
Yep, exactly.
But it doesn't necessarily imply it to this aspect, because that's for-
Well, it doesn't really address it, but it says, speakers will be limited to three minutes, that's all, it didn't say anything about how many people are up at the podium. Like, you know, if somebody has five people at the podium, do they get 15 minutes, the one speaker, or do they each have to say something?
We could just change it to say each speaker.
Yeah. So normally each speaker, yep, okay.
The, just through your update, you know, March, actually this Friday, March 4th, at 1:00 PM, we have another DE webinar with petitions to place a topic on the agenda. That's the first time the DE's come out with that, so I'll keep you posted if there's any changes to that section at that time.
I'm still on this page.
Yep.
Public comment during other board meeting agenda items. Right now, how we have it is if there's questions about an agenda item, usually the public participates by raising their hand. Would it be better practice to have a similar model where they come up to the podium versus raising their hand? And if so, should we state that in this policy?
So Catherine, that last sentence, that you're, I think you're referring to that last sentence, if there's any time, raise their hand, addressed under the board, discussion by the board could approach the podium, adding that statement in there, somewhere in that phrasing.
And I don't know, and I mean, I don't know if this will revert back to what is above, but that person also has a time limit of three minutes.
The only other thing I had was that last sentence, I think I communicated Debbie to, but the Board Secretary or the county auditor, instead of, is it on there?
And so, and I mean, the note on the, on this petition part, and I think you might get some more details, is that we do need to have a sign-in sheet when we discuss a petitioned item. And it says that they are, the individuals will be called to speak in order of the signup. Do you see that there?
I do, I do.
So we'll have to make sure that that is done, and somebody, somebody is there to control that, or to monitor that.
Yeah. And I was thinking, you know, in terms of Debbie asking, you know, state your name, those sort of things, we get it from there also, but make sure we have it written down.
Yeah, because, I mean, according to this rule, we have to go by who's first, who's second, who's third.
Yeah.
On that signup sheet.
On that signup, yeah.
On the day of the meeting.
Correct. Other questions there? 204.2, the next one there. Again, this is something that we really, for the most part, did not have, it's just, it's really an extension of the one previously, just walks through, if someone has a concern, what the process would be walking through. So in other words, first of all, in part A, you know, talking to the teacher, the employee, then the building principal, building principal to the directors or the superintendent, and then to the Board with public concerns, if a concern is brought forth. That's kind of the protocol of what you guys would tell people, or Mike, Cindy, or myself would walk through that process. It just outlines that there.
And then if it ultimately does escalate to the board level, then we will need something in, something formally by that individual, and it will have to come through the Board Secretary, and then the Board Secretary, or me or the Board Secretary.
Yep.
Brian, in letter A, we say that the matter should be first addressed to the teacher or the employee, to the teacher or employee, and then in B, we say, if you can't resolve it there, then you go to that, the building principal. Should we say, address to the teacher or employees' building principal? Because all we say is employees' building principal? Would that just clarify that?
Yep.
Just to be consistent?
Do you see that, Debbie? And sometimes A and B can go together as well, depending upon the situation, so. But we'll leave them as two separates.
Now, the one thing that it doesn't, the one group that it doesn't discuss, it goes from the principal to you, rather than the principal to, let's say, maybe Dr. Lewis or Mr. Zimmer. Should, do you want to say superintendent or designee, or something like that?
Or, or designee would be our typical phrase that we would use.
Because there might be concerns that they should be directly involved with as well. Okay.
And then we would put or designee, or superintendent's designee, and we'll get that-
Okay.
As to how we usually write that in the other board policy, so we're consistent. The next to, 204.4, which is the one that you'll see up there, which is ad hoc committees, ours was just considered, it was temporary committees previously, and it just talks about how those temporary or ad hoc committees will be formed, who's a part of those, and again, just a longer explanation from what ours were originally. And just talks about when the, when the committee is done, it would then dissolve at that point. And then 204. E1 is just the, E stands for exhibit, which you'll see on there, which is, just talks further about the purpose and function of those ad hoc committees, the membership, what that is. 205.1, there is nothing there that changes. 205.10, there's just one phrasing in there, one line that was added.
So on that, are they, are we adding what's in red?
I believe that is what came from ISB, yes.
Okay. So-
It just gives you the flexibility there, saying it's submitted within two weeks of the meeting, but does not be published within two weeks, which-
Oh, I see the difference.
-it typically would be-
Okay.
But it's just that, as long as you have it submitted in that time.
So we're saying it has to be submitted within two weeks, but not published within, but not published within two weeks?
Correct, for whatever reason.
Got it.
Yeah. But with us having board meetings on Mondays, you know, we're pretty good about having that within the two-week window by the close of the week. Our goal is typically Friday, and then send it out to. And then in that 205.1, there were just two things that were, or three things that were added at the very end there, that were new to what we had previously. Special meeting, again, what happens in 205.2, you can see what ours was there. There was one sentence, the first sentence was eliminated from ours, and updated. And again, just similar process we had, if we have to call a special meeting for any reason.
When it says, should a special meeting be called, public notice will be given, is the public notice be given in the normal, we normally notify the public, which is via email?
On the website.
On the website, okay.
Closing exempt session, again, very similar in what we have there, just a couple updates, and then the legal references at the end. And you'll see what constitutes the closed session, what's the exempt session, which Debbie will state when she does those, what the reason is in those purposes. 205.4, again, they just recommended that we have, saying it was not completely legally compliant, they updated what we currently have to make sure we're within the guidance of what is recommended. And this goes down to what Debbie, you were just asking Debbie about how we post meeting notices, and where they're posted, it's listed there. And then we, the quorum, that came out of a different one we had, so we just separated that one out, what constitutes a quorum. The rules of order, you can see, our 204.6 was simply just one statement that we followed the rules of order. So IASB recommended we put in 205.6, and then they also recommended the order regulations, just so it was in our policy as an example, versus just saying we followed Robert's rules. You can see what our current policy was. And this kind of goes to what you were asking before, Christine was asking the second one there, the process of making sure that going through, if members of the public wanted to, have an agenda item reaching out to, whom would it be reaching out to prior to Board meeting agenda, it was called Order of Business before, this is an example of one that we've included. 205.8, which is consent agenda. There was just one line that we added there, otherwise it was similar, and then legal reference update.
One of the questions I had gotten asked by a board member regarding the consent agenda, which I think is important, is, you know, we just approved the consent agenda, but if there's something on the consent agenda that you don't, that you don't want to approve, you can remove, say, I want that removed from the consent agenda, and then vote for the rest of the consent, and then that can be approved, and then we can discuss the topic that was removed at a, on the board level, and for the reasons why you wanted it removed from the consent agenda. That can be done.
The next one, 205.9, we just did not have this policy again in ours, and so IASB recommended we add it to it. and so IASB recommended we add it to it. Which, you know, we have public hearings on those different various topics.
So there's a reference to chair in there, is that really a reference to board president? It's near the heart.
Yeah.
And the other question I have is, it looks like it operates a little differently. So when we have our regular board meetings, sometimes the board members may ask us speaker a question directly, but in this case, the permission has to be given by the board president. Is that specifically for public hearings? And what's special here about that, I guess is my question.
This is like, will he open it up for a public hearing? It's basically essentially the same thing, where they get three minutes.
But as a board member, nor would it ask a question of someone who just, or, you know, presents something.
Yes.
I need your permission to do that. We have not really.
Yes.
That in our.
It's just a board member, a board member may ask questions of the speakers after receiving permission from the board president. Yes. And you're talking about for, let's say, in, in the previous ones, it doesn't specify that?
Yeah.
Yeah, we may find, we may need to consider specifying that than in the previous. Because it specifically mentions it here, but doesn't mention it in the others.
I think that's practically a task ourselves, is that, that would be different from what we currently do.
Right. That's partly my point.
What other sections do you want it?
I'm not proposing it be added. I'm asking the question, do you want it or not?
What, what other sections, I guess, would, like, are you talking about, like, the public comment?
Right. Or, let's say that it's, let's say it's an agenda item, and we then go to the, to the public. Usually those questions and those comments are kind of done through my discussion of calling people to come up to the, coming up, and then they're, they're saying their thing. And then if a board member wants to ask them a question, right now it doesn't say that, you know, I should, okay, if you have a question, go ahead and ask it, and have it go through me. But this public here is specifically staying, saying that.
This section only.
And we're, we're doing that in the, in those situations, we just haven't spelled it out. And so I think Doug is asking, should we spell it out or not? Do we need to?
Well, but Nikhil always says questions from the board.
Yeah. But questions from the board regarding.
It's to the speaker.
To the, to the speaker, whoever's.
Right.
Talking.
You ask the board if they have questions, so that's.
Yeah.
Giving them permission.
Okay. That is true.
So keep that. You asked generally, what questions do we have from the board?
Yeah.
Would cover that statement. Maybe we rephrase this sentence to say that. And that would get after what you're asking.
And then, and then do you want to, but do you want to put that in the other area as well, then?
Let us go back and review that and see.
Okay.
How that would be. Does it answer what you're asking?
It does. I'm, I'm sure how I feel about that. That's part of what's nagging at me, but maybe revised wording would help with that. So that's why I'm okay looking at a different revision of them. Does anybody else have any thoughts on that?
Well, I think it makes sense for it to be just in this section versus some of the other sections, because this is a topic up for discussion a little bit more than, you know, at the beginning, when people are coming up, or even we're not discussing it as much. I know there is the consent agenda piece, though, but.
But like, in the series, in the area, in the, in the section about, talking about a gen, an agenda item, there is more of a discussion there.
Yeah.
And so I think that's, that's where we, you know, when you go into that area there, it doesn't really specify, unless it, I don't think it does, the way this one does.
Comes down to, I mean, this is, the other ones were comments from the board, so it's just a comment. This is more a, bringing forth a question. You've asked them to come forward. The question, if you have a follow up question, do you have to ask Nikhil for permission? Or can you just ask the question? Is really what it comes down to.
Right. And here, they're saying that it should go through presidents.
Right. But as Debbie is saying, typically you ask if someone speaks. You have other questions from the board.
Right.
At that point, which would give everyone the opportunity to ask a question at that point.
Yeah, so I don't think it has to be anywhere else, just here.
Let us revise that with the practice we use and see.
I think I'm in the spot where Catherine.
Say it again, Catherine?
We were, we think that having it just in this public hearing section, because in the other sections, it's already by Nikhil saying that.
Yeah.
It's already addressed, so we don't need to have this in all the other areas as well.
Okay. Let us look at this section, then, just this one alone. Okay. Two oh six point one, and then the next one there, and two oh six point two are really kind of a combination of what we had in membership and state and national associations. So it has to do with compensation expenses, and then membership development, training for you as boards, and expenses, and how you submit those to Debbie or Mike for payment. And the process we use.
Hey, can I interrupt you real quick?
Yep.
There's a reference to Better Boardsmanship Award, and I thought you'd tomorrow.
So throughout the year, there are seminars you can go to. Sometimes, like, they have them up in Clinton, they kind of rotate throughout the state in different places. We've had one in, I think, in DeWitt, we've had one in Clinton, we've had one down in, I think, a couple other places. And they kind of, some members of the IASB administration come and they give a topic. And if you do a certain amount of those in a certain amount of time, then when you go to the IASB meeting, you are recognized for the extra work for going to these seminars, getting credit for it, and then you can get what's called a Better Boardsmanship Award.
And that's a board level, right?
Huh?
That's a board, whole board level, right?
Yes. And, but you, but you get it individually for being a better board member. And so, and even, I think going to the IASB conference and going to those seminars, also you get credit for in working towards this Better Boardsmanship Award. And I think several of us have gotten it through the years for different seminars we've gone to. Since COVID, there haven't been as many, although they, they do have some through Zoom, like I've had purchase, purchase been a couple through Zoom. But usually, it's an in-person meeting. You get to meet other board members from your local areas as well, who attend. Sometimes superintendents will come to it as well. And if you're interested, you just let Deb know, and then she will register you. And then, several times, we've actually driven together and gone.
Okay, thanks.
So I hope, I hope that they restart that soon, because it's really informative.
Actually, we had signed, were you going to be part of the AEA one originally?
Yeah, I knew about the local one, happened with it, right?
No, it can't.
They canceled.
Oh, did they? Oh.
And, but if we would have attended, then we would have got some points for that, for attending that piece.
There was one piece of that.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yep. Or we can have IASB come here and do a whole learning session during one of our board meetings. Those count towards that as well.
So when you go to the conference in November, you'll get an extra little banner for your name tag that says you're a better boardsman.
Yeah.
Underneath, gifts to board members, everything was the same, minus there was two dot, two bullet points. And again, had to do with the state and national organization there on the first one, and then costs. So there's just, with food and drink and so forth, that was listed there, that we did not have. And I think, oh, not quite. The last one, two oh six point four, was one that we currently have. So that is all of the 200 series updates from IASB.
I just had one suggestion, and thank you, Debbie, for printing this out for us, because it's so much easier to, I look at a screen all day, so having this on paper was much nicer. But it got me thinking, like, when I was kind of on boarded and, like, my orientation for being on the board, this would have been a really great thing to have. And maybe you gave it to me, and I just don't remember. But I think for new board members, this would be a good thing to hand them on paper and let them review it. I mean, it has a lot of great information that, you know, is good to know. You know, you think you know a lot of it, but has a lot of detail that I think would be important.
The series or the whole board policy?
Just the series. Yeah, not the whole board policy, just the series.
Yeah, I think that's, that's. You know, whenever we have a new board member, I usually will meet with that new board member, or the president does, with Deb. And, and Brian, maybe we can discuss, that could be one of our items of discussion, Deb, when we meet with the new board members. And then I can kind of highlight some aspects of it. Or the president, whoever it is, can. It's a good suggestion, thanks.
So let us work on those adjustments, and then we'll bring them back to the next board meeting for, we'll highlight those that we've adjusted. Okay? So we have to go through all of them again.
Deb, we're going to get a copy of the revision from board meeting.
Yeah.
It'll be in the packet.
Would you want it in paper again?
Yeah.
But.
Let's do it in paper again, so we can get it to them.
If it'll electronic in the packet, I'll be good.
Okay.
Okay. So there is no required motion on that. Moving on to the fiscal year 2022, 2023 property tax levy rate discussion. Mr. King Smith, this is continuation from last time, or a couple times ago.
Yeah. At the last board meeting, we had began our discussion of where we wanted to set the district's property tax levy rate for next year. At that meeting, I had recommended that we lower the district's property tax levy rate for next year by 30 cents per $1,000 of taxable valuation. And that recommendation was made based on, at that time, the Iowa legislature had not set supplemental state aid yet. But that recommendation was based on 2.5% supplemental state aid, which is what the governor had recommended. Well, since our last board meeting, the Iowa legislature has officially approved 2.5% as the percentage for supplemental state aid. So therefore, we are not changing our recommendation from last board meeting. We are continuing to recommend that we lower the district's overall property tax levy rate for next year by 30 cents per $1,000 of taxable valuation, which would decrease it from the current $13.76 per thousand of taxable valuation, down to $13.46, rounded to the nearest penny of $1,000 of taxable valuation. Just quickly reviewing a couple of the main reasons that we made that recommendation at last board meeting. Our general fund, we are limited for next year on how much we can levy for cash reserve in our general fund next year, because our cash balance increased during this last fiscal year. And so we are limited to how much we can levy for cash reserve. Therefore, that would cause our general fund levy to decrease by about 90 cents per thousand of taxable valuation. But our management fund, we have always had the goal in the district of having enough of a balance in our management fund to cover five years' worth of expenditures in the management fund. And so therefore, what we would recommend doing is shifting 60 cents of our levy that is currently being levied in the general fund into our management fund. So the net of those two, the, the general fund levy lowering by 90 cents, and the management fund levy going up by 60 cents, is how you get to the 30 cent decrease, which we're recommending for next year. One thing I also had mentioned last board meeting was, one thing we always look at is what's called the residential rollback. The residential rollback for next year is actually decreasing by nearly 2%. So that means approximately 2% less of the assessed valuation of your home will be subject to property taxes next year than compared to this year. So if the assessed valuation on your home did not increase during the year, less of it, about 2% less, would be subject to property tax next year. How that works out is, we technically could, could raise our property tax levy rate for next year by as much as 59 cents per $1,000 of taxable valuation. And again, unless your valuation on your home increased, you would not pay more in school district property taxes. But we are recommending actually that you de, that we decrease the levy rate for next year by 30 cents per thousand of taxable valuation. The only other piece of information that I was going to share related to this tonight, we, we do have information now on what we believe the other school districts in Scott County are doing with their levy rate. I had emailed the other school business officials, officials at Bettendorf, North Scott, and Davenport. Davenport, for next year, is planning on raising their levy rate by 31 cents per thousand of taxable valuation. And then they already have in their plan, two years, or two years from now, to raise it by another 30 cents per $1,000 of taxable valuation. And that is in order to help their solvency ratio, as their solvency ratio is quite a bit lower than the other three districts in Scott County. North Scott School District for next year, their school business official said that they believe they will either keep their levy rate the same as what it is now, or possibly could lower it by as much as 20 cents per thousand of taxable valuation. So the range of either lowering it 20 cents to keeping it the same. Bettendorf School District, they are looking at, looks like about a 46 cent decrease in their property tax levy rate for next year. It could be less than that, depending on how their property and workers' comp insurance renewals come in, according to their school business official. But as of right now, they were planning on possibly lowering it by 46 cents per thousand of taxable valuation. So those are what the other three school districts in Scott County are looking at doing. So you can see, if we were to lower it by 30 cents, that would be in a similar range to what the other, well, at least Bettendorf and North Scott are doing. Again, that, Davenport's looking at raising theirs for the next two years.
Okay.
So that's the only really new information, that and the fact that the supplemental state aid was officially approved at 2.5%. But our recommend, excuse me, our recommendation is still 30 cents. We don't need a motion on this tonight, we just need the board to come to consensus on this in order to allow our staff accountant time to process all of the paperwork related to the certified budget. Then next board, meaning the one in March, we would set the public hearing date for that first board meeting in April. It would be published in newspaper, the last Thursday in March, the budget would be published, the proposed budget would be published in the newspaper. And then at the April 11th board meeting is when we would have the public hearing on the budget, setting the property tax levy rates. And then we would officially make a motion at the April 11th board meeting to adopt the property tax levy rates in the certified budget for next year. And then we get it to the county by April 15th, the due date to get it to the county.
Are there questions regarding the tax levy rate proposal and the decrease by 30 cents? Sounds like there's consensus then, that looks like, since we know the numbers now of 2.5% SSA, you wanting to maybe increase the management fund reserves a little bit? And we are kind of abutting against our general funds reserve, it seems like a good recommendation, at least at this point. So.
So we do have consensus then?
Yeah, there's consensus.
Laura, start working the numbers.
Yep.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Now, the five-year capital projects plan. Mr. Struess, Mr. King Smith, and Mr. Zink.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and just start giving a couple highlights through, going through the five-year plan. Things are very similar to what you saw previously. Leland can give you some updates, but I think the biggest thing is you look at the five-year plan, really trying to go through and look at roof replacements, trying to get those in line with a bigger chunk of funds, because we see roof prices continue to go up, and also the need across the district. The boiler, AC, and chiller, trying to get a five-year rotational plan put in there, is what that looks like for updates. And then the classroom modernization, those are the large things that you would see across many of the years. The other thing I would just mention to you is, you look at that, remember, we have our junior high work that we're doing right now for the opening of the addition of the school, which would be in the 24, 25 school year. We're working with the architect on the schematics right now of that project. The other question we continue to watch will be, when will Forest Grove have to potentially move to a four-section building, as we watch houses grow in that area? So there is funds on here for that, roughly that same timeframe. The other one that you would see, and there's a big ticket, one would be the high school track and turf project, which will start here coming up. And the plan would be to have that in place by the 23, 24, start of that school year. New turf, and the track would be, hopefully the sub base, for the most part, will be able to stay and just put it, resurface the track on top of that. One other one that was not on here before, coming up here, we're starting the junior high baseball field for $40,000, was not on this last time, so that's a new one. And then you'll also see underneath Belmont in year one, what we've added there with. And then you'll also see underneath Belmont in year one, what we've added there with, what we're noticed with the Bridgeview Roof Project. Pleasant View came in pretty good from where we were anticipating, but we don't know where the junior high project's going to land with construction costs. So we had taken that $475,000 that we received from the sales tax, and we put that as basically $500,000 in there for potential unbudgeted construction costs. Just because we need to make sure that we're not selling ourselves too tight on some of these projects, so there's the $500,000 there. And then you'll also note in that year one, just with where we are going with expansion around us, we just put in there land exploration, year to be determined, but a million dollars set aside, so if we do have to find additional land at some point, don't know when, we have money set aside for potential land purchase if we need to. We just don't want to sell ourselves short again, long-term, looking ahead to the future. So that is the money that's set aside there for right now for that. So those are some new things. And Leland, if you want to add any comments there? And then Mike will go through the, kind of the five-year budgetary projection where it looks like, so do we have to budget or borrow or not borrow, so?
Probably the biggest thing is the roofing itself. Just if you look at Bridgeview, that whole job, that whole project got shifted by one year just because of the kind of materials. They still have the same issues. Their other thing, we're kind of moving the roofing around a little bit right now. Pricing is up like 35% because of the shortages. So we're trying not to bid roofs right now, hoping, hoping that it'll, it'll return to normal possibly next year. So that's probably the biggest thing. And right now, they're actually expecting it to even go higher.
Any questions regarding the, for Leland regarding the proposal here on the construction issues? I have one. So you have, and I mentioned for this year, driveway entrance replacement, $11,633, and then for next year, you have the 300, which we're going to be doing. So is this driveway entrance replacement, that 11,000, just not, we're not going to do that?
The 11,000 is what we've already spent on architectural, related expenses to it. And so that already has hit this year.
Okay, so then the next is going to be, so, in the 22, 22, 22, 23 fiscal years where the, what we approved last time is going to be in that year, okay?
Our fiscal year starts July 1st, so technically, some of the work will start, I believe, prior to July 1st.
Okay.
We probably won't get billed for it until after July 1st, I'm guessing, or the majority of it anyway, after July 1st.
Okay. Got it. The questions?
Well, I was going to go through the, if there's no other questions for Leland, I was just going to quickly go through what's on the screen there, and I apologize for the, probably have it magnified about as big as you can magnify it there. Oh, okay, there we go, okay. So these are what we call the financials pages of the five-year capital projects plan. And the main things I'm going to point out here, and this was in your board packet also, on the first page is our revenue and expenses for our PEPAL fund, our physical plant and equipment levy fund. And most of our revenue for the PEPAL fund does come from property taxes. There are two different components of PEPAL. There's the voted PEPAL, which is $1.34 per thousand of taxable valuation. And then there's the board-approved PEPAL, which is 33 cents per thousand dollars of taxable valuation. And you can see the note in red there on the screen. Our voted PEPAL is currently set to expire June 30th, 2028. So we have about six years or so left before we would have to, well, we would want to approve it probably a year or two before it is set to expire, just in case it wouldn't get approved, and we'd have a couple more opportunities still to get it approved before it expires. But it's currently set to expire June 30th, 2028. You can see we're bringing in, for, for the voted PEPAL, in the current base year, you can see there on the screen, we're bringing in $2,723,755. And then for years one through five, I have that going up to $2,874,900. And that is based on our increase in our taxable valuations in the district. So these pages have been updated for the most recent taxable valuations that we received around January 1st of this year. Board-approved PEPAL, that's 33 cents per thousand of taxable valuation. So the board approves that each year when we approve our certified budget. That's one part of our certified budget, is the board-approved PEPAL. And we're bringing in this year, $670,775 for the board-approved PEPAL. Next year, $707,998 for the board-approved PEPAL. And when we do the five-year plan, we conservatively budget those numbers not going up over the next five years, even though they likely will go up as our valuations continue to go up over the next five years. Down in the lower section of this first page is all of the expenditures related, related to PEPAL. And then at the bottom of this first page, it shows for each of the five years, what our ending fund balance is projected to be in PEPAL. And so we have about $150,000 fund balance projected in PEPAL for each of the years on here. If you looked at the second page on this sheet, if you scroll down, Beth, the second page reflects our monies that we receive from the one-cent sales tax, the statewide penny, which is also referred to as SAVE, which stands for Secure and Advanced Vision for Education. We are currently bringing in, well, for this year, the base year, we're projecting that we will bring in just under $6.3 million from the statewide penny. And that includes the $475,000 additional dollars that we received this year as part of our makeup payment from the state that Brian was referring to a few minutes ago. Sales were good in Iowa over the last year or so, higher than they projected, so that's why we and all of the school districts in Iowa got a makeup payment that was larger than we expected this year for the statewide penny. Then you can see for the next five years on the plan, we, again, being conservative, we don't want to just expect that we will receive a large makeup payment each year. So for the next five years on here, we're projecting receiving about $5.7 million in money from the statewide penny sales tax. Most of the expenditures on here related to the statewide penny sales tax fund go for paying the principal and interest payments on our previous borrowings that we have done. So on the screen there, all those lines that say transfer to debt service, principal and interest for the various sales tax bonds that we've issued over the past several years, that's paying the principal and interest payments on the money we've previously borrowed against the statewide penny. The main line to look at on here is the line that, right at the bottom of the screen there that says, ending fund balance, PEPAL and Capital Projects Fund combined. You can see, at the end of the current 2021, 22 base year, we're projecting to still have $13,284,937 between PEPAL and Capital Projects Fund. If you scroll across there, Beth, if you can scroll over to the right slowly, yeah, you can see over the next few years, the next four years or so, that number does steadily decline as we finish paying off the, what we owe on the construction related to Forest Grove Elementary School. And then, as Brian mentioned, we have a building addition that will be beginning at our junior high school. We have a building addition on our five-year plan at Forest Grove Elementary School, currently on our five-year plan. So as those projects happen, that, that will continue to use our money that is in our PEPAL and Capital Projects Fund. But you can see, if you look out to year four, the next to the last column on the right here, currently, the lowest we're projecting our fund balance to get in PEPAL and Capital Projects Fund is just under 2 million, or just under $1.8 million, $1,797,192. And then in year five, it would start to go back up again. So unless we would add significant expenditures related to building additions or things like that, it appears right now that we would not need to borrow additional money over the next five years, as the five-year plan sits right now. So that's where we sit in regards to the financials over the next five years in the PEPAL and Capital Projects Fund.
Questions?
Can you remind me what the technology bump is there in year three?
So from the 700,000?
Yeah.
The reason why is when you look at where we are with our cycle, we're dropping one of our iPad leases, and we look at the one-to-one that we have, and also the cost of, just in general, software, things of that nature, that, that's why we're bumping it from $500,000 to $700,000. It'll keep us going forward in that, what we need for future expenses in the rotation cycle that we have in place. Yes, yes. And we just continue to grow, we can't do with 500,000 anymore. Yep.
Brian, wasn't that also adding fourth grade? I mean, that's all in there too.
Yes.
Bringing on other grades at the same time.
Fourth grade comes on this year, and then the following year, it is third grade, and that's part of that cycle. And I, don't quote me, but I think it's every four years, every three years, that we'll recycle those Chromebooks through to a, to classes, that's part of that balance.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, he, he reduced it, and we're finishing up the five-year rotation, and then he's going up to the four, and then that's got cycled out to go to a three, so.
Okay, thanks.
So on the first page, in the ending funding fund balance, you have $150,000 kind of as, I guess, our wiggle room. Given what Leland is mentioning regarding how expensive roofing is, the numbers could go up, do you think that you're still comfortable with that being your wiggle room, the 150? Or do you think that there needs to be an adjustment based on what we're seeing right now?
Actually, the projects he's talking about, really, that 150,000 wiggle room is just in PEPAL.
Yeah, and then you have the capital.
We are allowed to transfer money out of our one-cent sales tax into PEPAL to pay for projects that qualify as PEPAL expenditures. That's an allowable transfer that we can do. So really, we have a lot more, you kind of, if I said, you kind of have to look at the two funds together, combined, so.
And so, yeah, that one year, which 1.7 million is the lowest that goes, which is, plenty.
Right, so yeah, we really have a lot more wiggle room than just $150,000 per year.
Okay, as long as we.
I'd be nervous if it was just $150,000.
That's what I was going to say, okay. As long as we can transfer all that and do that, that's fine.
Right, yeah.
So, Leland, are you concerned about the roofs leaking, getting, you know, in the period we were thinking about waiting?
We just got, I just got it back on Thursday. I just got the roofing, we just had a survey done of all the roofs. I just got the report. There's some areas that are worse than we expected. Riverdale actually came back better than expected. Now, that's actually one I was really concerned about. And the cost to re-roof, Riverdale came back lower. But we did find some additional issues up the high school and the junior high. They seem to be the biggest two problems right now, and so.
So the wait for prices to come down, you think it's okay, given what we've seen in the report from those two facilities?
Yes. They broke it down to three areas, like, they said zero to five years, but they color-coded the maps, so there was zero to five, five to 10, 10 to 15. So we knew exactly what we had to hit first. So, and you just, you really just don't know. I mean, a good storm could come through and really cause, you know, cause a lot more damage to the roofs that's already there, a good hailstorm. But so far, the roofs have been getting better, we've been doing a lot more maintenance to them, a lot more patching. They do need a lot of work, though, I'll just be honest, they need quite a bit of help.
We're glad with the Bridgeview, we had a pretty mild winter, knock on wood, and that probably helped us a little bit at Bridgeview because we were waiting to get that project done.
Is, I know that you, you can't predict the future, but right now, the numbers are coming up high compared to what they've been in the past. You had mentioned that maybe this numbers could go even higher next year, are you, are you expecting that?
They're expecting to go higher in the next month.
In the next month, but then ultimately?
We're hoping that's going to, that's, that'll be the peak, and then it'll go back down.
Okay.
Yeah, you just don't know.
Right. Like, I would hate to be looking six months from now when this is considered, would have been an ideal compared to six months, but I know you can't predict that. But is, are your contractors all telling you sort of to ideally wait and see what happens?
They're saying run off the wait, if you can. It's kind of like buying a new car right now.
Yeah. You just don't, okay. And right now, it's quite expensive, right?
Yep.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay.
Leland, how about the chillers? Brian's right, the winter is nice and warm, but summer, spring, fall gets really warm. Probably setting with those.
That's, we've spent quite a bit of time talking about that, too. The, as part of, part of the junior high project, there's two chillers in between high. So one of the chillers gets replaced as part of the junior high project, so it doesn't show up in here because it's in that other project itself. So that's still part of the rotational chillers at the same time. So they're, they're there.
Thanks.
If we don't have any other questions for either Mike, Leland, or Brian, then I will take a motion.
I move the board approved the five-year capital projects plan as presented.
Saqia?
Motion of Ms. Kunkel, second by Ms. Anderson, that the board approve the five-year capital projects plan as presented. Roll call vote, please, Ms. Taman.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Ayers?
Yes.
Mrs. Brackman? Mrs. Hoskins?
Yes.
Mr. Kenwisher?
Yes.
Mrs. Kunkel?
Yes.
Dr. Wogley?
Yes. Okay, moving on to new business. Thank you, Leland. Moving on to new business, two-year and six-year graduate follow-up studies. Mr. Zimmer?
Okay. If my evaluation is based upon the return of these surveys, I'm failing miserably because you'll notice that over the last 10 years, it has decreased half. We started out at whopping 40% in both the six-year and the two-year, and we're now down to 15% in the six-year and 20% in the other. On the other hand, when it comes to valuations, I will tell you that the class of 2015 represents six years when my youngest is out of high school, so that kind of gives you an idea that everybody is now earning an income on their own, and I had to beat the kid to say, would you please turn that, turn that survey so I look better? So, okay, with that, a couple of things. What I look at on these two and six-year surveys is trends, and I also look at, I don't take any one single comment as, okay, that's it, and, you know, the sky's falling or whatever, because I can look at one comment, it's negative, and not more than two comments down below, it's positive, for the exact same thing, the exact same class, the exact same, whatever. So again, I kind of look for trends. So in the class of 2015, now they're six years out, here's a couple of things on most beneficial. Music program continues to repeatedly get positive accolades for building community, high expectations, and just, pun intended, good vibes. So again, kudos to them. CTE courses across all areas commented about how those skills transferred beyond high school. I'm thankful for that, that's a good thing, they're supposed to. The ability to access concurrent college courses was repeatedly acknowledged as very helpful in the six-year follow-up, because now all of a sudden, they're starting to see that, wow, those classes that I got college credit for and they actually applied, they went towards something, I got my degree done faster, I was able to double up on majors or pick up a minor or whatever it might be. English courses across most areas were noted as very beneficial, and the extracurricular activities also received very favorable comments six years out. Lee's beneficial, I just marked down nothing that was repeated or wasn't immediately countered by someone else having a positive experience in the same area. I give you an example, one was in counseling, was, hey, with where everybody's going, you should have more explanation or background about highly selective schools. And not two comments down was, I'm so thankful that you had the Irish schools come in and present to our son. I said, well, what school were you guys going to? But anyway, yes, we did have the Irish schools come in and do a presentation, that person might just have missed it. As far as service areas that were used and, and very expressed, were library and media center repeatedly in that, the health clinic and food service. And again, I'm glad to hear a lot of those because much has gone into the library to improve that facility, and then food service, that continues. That was a major vote by this board to go to the service area that we have, because, again, I was here when those lines were way back. again, I was here when those lines were way back, and so, during, during serving lunches, so that was good. And then improved course offerings, they were asking for personal finance and American Sign Language. And so, that was kind of the summary of what I took out of that. And additional comments, I just made note that most were very personal or had been stated in earlier feedback, is kind of what I. Now, the two-year, they don't have quite near as much of the ways of the world underneath of them, so just two years out. Most beneficial, I put down one thing, and it was repeated over and over and over again, the availability of concurrent and AP courses. I mean, that, as you looked at that, I think it was every other one, it was like, thank you, I'm so glad that we had those classes. And I'd like to share with you some data that I provided with Scott Community College. We went back and did a tracing of the number of courses that students enrolled in all the way back to 2008, '09, and we would have somewhere around 200, 225, thereabouts. In 2012, '13, when we started providing incentives for teachers to get their master's degree in a content area, that's one of our course incentive policies, and then our hiring practices, we went out and searched for these folks. In 2017, '18, we were up to 1,240 courses that students were taking. So in five years, it increased fivefold the number of courses that students are taking advantage of. So we haven't decreased the number of courses. Each year, we, we've been increasing, as a matter of fact, either AP course offerings or college, both in the career techno, technology side of it, and then also in the social sciences, arts and sciences. So, as a matter of fact, you sat here back in October and approved some of those, music theory, some of that kind of stuff. So you'll see that coming across in addition to those courses supporting our registered apprenticeships. So a lot of great things happening in there. As far as least beneficial, again, same comments, there were, you know, individual things, or it was stated elsewhere. Service areas used, library and media, guidance office, health clinic and food services were all marked as positive remarks. And then improved course offerings, Dr. Wugley, AP Biology. And then personal finance. Even though we offer those courses, it's just a matter of getting students to recognize, and there's so many offerings anymore. I mean, they've got to make choices on stuff, and they don't know, or, again, I'm going to pick on my son. I had him take personal finance as a junior, and it didn't mean anything, and now here we are later, and it's like, now it means something. So sometimes you, you have it, and if you're not living it, you just don't know. So that's kind of the summary of the two- and six-year follow-ups. So making some good progress, but as always, we're not sitting back in our laurels and continue to take these comments and make improvements. That's all I have.
Questions from the board?
I have a question. We hear personal finance time and time again. We know it's a solid class. Some states do have a requirement that a child has to have X amount of hours in personal finance. What does, is that the state saying our students have to have personal finance to graduate? Or is that you guys saying we would like an enhanced graduation experience that the kid has to take personal training?
It's, it's required to have personal finance for all students, and so we have that as graduation requirements. It's embedded in our economics.
Okay, so that's where.
Right. So when you think about this, the econ class is only a semester long, so about half of that is your true econ 101, and then the other half is dealing with taxes and rent and all that kind of business. But it doesn't come close to, if you take the semester class of just personal finance, that takes it up a whole nother step. So, yes, there's a taste of it in the economics, it meets the graduation requirement, it meets the state requirement, but we also have that elective course that your son took that's another step up.
And Mike, that's through you and I, or the tests that get you and I credit?
They can, yes, that you'll hear me come back and report on. That is an option. That's, that's an option for our kids to take that. But that gives you a testament that how rich that personal finance standalone course is, it's a semester long. If you can sit there and take a high school class and then turn around and test out of it through you and I's finance class and get college credit for it, it's, it's good.
And just that personal finance class, the first day, they pick, I want to be X, and almost everything you do in that class is based on the job you picked day one. So you do all your research, and now that you say that, I remember Blake did have econ in you within, oh, we just learned this in personal finance, personal. So I don't know if there's, like, room, but I've also talked to parents who have sophomores and juniors, and they're like, oh, what's that personal finance class you always talk about? Because if you don't start a plan coming in freshman year, you run out of room in your schedule, and that class is stellar.
Do you have any thoughts on how we increase participation in the surveys?
That's what I was gonna ask.
I can go back, I mean, and this would probably go back to maybe 2008, 2012-year graduate surveys, when we started seeing that decrease. We actually took two years where we personally called everybody that graduated. We hired some kids to do the calling for us, we did the calling, and there was no change in the survey results. And we tried to time it so the kids are coming home during Thanksgiving break, that'd be in their parents' mailbox. We even just, now they have a link, so it's not even pencil paper anymore like it used to be, but it just, no, I mean, you can see, we're pretty steady at that return rate all the time. So if there's good suggestions, we're open.
Why use gift certificate when they return for summer break?
Well, honestly, that's what I was thinking about, was something like that.
And you have to stop by and say hi to Debbie to pick it up, you know, because she needs one more thing.
I love that.
Just say, Debbie.
Yeah, I mean, incentivization sometimes helps, potentially, because this information is really important, the two and the six-year. And so, you know, 15% for the 20, for that 2015 is, is pretty small.
So they could either fill it out on paper or do it online? Is that correct?
Mike, double check. I think it's all online, I think.
She asked me that, and I hadn't looked.
I believe it is.
I only saw the paper, okay.
I would just be curious, you know, if the majority of them are filling it out online, do we even waste the money? I don't, it's not a waste of money, I guess, if some return it, but do we put that money towards some sort of incentive rather than mailing it to 400 households?
Let us ask Missy Huff. She'll be, I mean, she's the one who sends it out. We'll get confirmation for her next.
Okay.
We'll shoot you an email with the answer.
Do you want to talk about that and decide we didn't have enough up-to-date email addresses?
I don't know. I'll just missy.
Well, that would be, yeah, email addresses.
I was gonna say, do you, when they graduate, do you get email addresses from all the resident, all the graduates that can be used for future communication?
I will find out. We'll get an answer for you on that.
Is it, how long does the survey take for them to complete?
Well, it used to be a lot of, oh, you know, selection of things, going through lots of different questions, and we really narrowed it down to be just more of a narrative assessment and a much quicker, because you get more feedback when it's narrative.
Yeah.
More informative information, at least. So it's probably.
It is narrative. I mean, it just comes down to what courses or activity most beneficial and what's, which were least beneficial. And then it's the services, comments on services, and it's all narrative.
It's about four questions plus some demographic information.
Right, yeah, I was thinking, you know, didn't take a bunch of time, that might motivate people.
Yes, especially if they have a bunch of other things going on.
Do they have, is there a letter in there stating, you know, the benefits to our district for them, filling that out, so, you know, trying to pull out those heartstrings a little bit, like, we need you?
We can bring a sample of the email that comes out, so we can see that.
There is, actually.
Yeah.
I don't remember the verbiage, but there is. And I'll get you in just a second. Any other questions at all? Yeah.
Mr. Ziver, I noticed in the six-year, there was a reference to trades not apparently being offered as extensively, but then in the two-year, those questions seemed to go away. Did we just, like, slow down our program and restart it back up, or what happened there?
I think it is a change in how our community and society is viewing going into the trades and using it. I mean, the turnaround has been just, in my opinion, being a tradesperson, it's just been jaw-dropping. I didn't think I would be in this profession long enough to see it come back with the way it's doing right now. And so we are supporting that, pushing that, and we, we got to get some balance back. So I think that's what you're seeing. And I hope to see, as these folks start coming on that have gone through the welding registered apprenticeship, the CNC machine, you start to see some more comments, because, again, you look at who returns these, hardly no one, other than those going to a four-year college returns these. The return rate of anybody else, unless they went to a four-year school, is almost nil.
But we've seen an uptick on this, people who are doing the trades. Yeah, there's been some great feedback comments from the students.
Yeah. You're gonna get to meet some of them here, coming up here in the next month or so, I say.
The other question I had, or your comment I had, was, I read, read all the comments. The question about mental health techniques being included in health class, I guess, given the world environment, and these are quite certainly young adults are feeling it pretty good, so I guess I'm just saying, I think that's a, something more personal you're considering a little more carefully.
Especially over what we've been doing the last couple of years and seeing, you're correct. Is there any, I know the first survey, you said, come out like in the, the first request for the survey, you feel that it comes out in the fall, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Is there any way to move that into the summer, where maybe they might have a little more time?
We can look at all of those things.
To maybe see if that might be able to increase the amount of people who are responding?
I also wonder if this, they're getting the email, it's going to junk email, or?
Yeah.
But it is followed up with a letter for people who.
It's mailed, it's mailed, right?
It's mailed. And then it's mailed twice.
There's a link.
And then in the, in the letters of link, and it's mailed at least twice, I think. I've gotten it two times, at least, and it, but it's come to the home address.
Yep.
Assuming you haven't moved or moved out of the area.
I think, you know, all the seniors have their personal email addresses.
That they can give out.
I think some of them need to figure out how to collect those upon graduation.
We would have most of their cell phone numbers, right? I mean, could we send a text with a link instead?
Might be able to.
You know?
Create a database.
I mean, we would more likely have a correct telephone number than a correct email, maybe, something to think.
I guess the point is finding all ways of communication so we can try and increase the amount of people who are returning them.
The way universities keep track of email addresses for alumni is they have alumni magazine and alumni association, and that, you know, keeps that connection for a long period of time, it gives them a higher likelihood, so that's another option you mentioned about.
That's what I was gonna say, is that when, almost, by my kids, when they've graduated, they, their email goes to, you know, like, my older one went to Brown, so it's brownalumni.edu. So then they give that to them as an email that they can have for the rest of their life if they want. They have an alumni email, I don't know if we have that, if we want Mr. Panikam to add a whole nother database of emails, but it's a possibility that you could use. How often people will check that, who knows?
And what's they give their university?
So, yes, go ahead.
Well, I'm just curious, this is the first time.
Why don't you, can you come up to the podium and state your name and your capacity within the district, please?
My name's Kevin Bott, my kids go to Hopewell. I was just curious about the numbers that you're getting and the feedback from the surveys. Are you also comparing that statewide, other school districts, and nationally, response rates and what those trends are too, or, this is pretty local.
Yeah, the trend on a survey is, if anything, it was higher a few years ago in the 40, but if you get a third or something like that, you're usually feeling pretty good about it. I just know that for our audience that's listening or whatever, parents keep nagging graduates to do it, because I, again, had three graduate from here, and I know the other two didn't send anything in, and I nag them every two and six years. I don't know.
I was just curious, because we, we do that a lot of work.
Yeah.
Comparing those trends to, that might help you guys also determine how much extra effort you want to go to that big year. Just thought I'd bring it up.
Thank you.
Thank you. They, if anything, for the public and those listening, we do read these, we do look at them, we do respond to these. I guess that's my point. That is the point.
Okay. Anything else? Otherwise, I will take a motion.
I move the board accept the graduate follow-up study reports as presented.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Haskins, second by Mr. Ayers, that the board accept the graduate follow-up study reports as presented. Roll call vote, please, Ms. Damon.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Ayers?
Yes.
Mrs. Brackman?
Yes.
Mrs. Haskins?
Yes.
Mr. Kenwisher?
Yes.
Mrs. Conkle?
Yes.
Dr. Wugley?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to the January financial, January monthly financial reports, Mr. King Smith?
Yeah, and looking at the financial reports for January, I did not see anything that stood out to me as unusual or unexpected at this point in the fiscal year, so I would just take any questions, if anybody has any questions, but nothing really stood out to me as something that I wouldn't expect at this point in the fiscal year.
Our nutrition fund is still getting the revenue from?
Right, yeah, still getting the majority of the revenue from the federal, making up for the.
And that is going to end when?
I believe currently, it's supposed to be at the end of the school year.
Okay, so it'll go through this entire school year.
Right.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, if not, I will take a motion.
I move the board accept the monthly financial report for January 2022 as presented.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Ayers, second by Ms. Conkle, that the board accept the monthly financial reports for January 2020 as presented.